We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to South Burlington School Board Meeting. And I'll start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move to any amendments?
No.
All right, we'll go right to student announcements and student rep report.
Student announcements and student rep report.
That's it, Delaney.
There you go, get comfortable.
So first off, there's going to be parent-teacher conferences this school break, the 25th and the 26th. Pretty sure they're closed for online submissions for parent-teacher conferences, but there will be parent-teacher conferences. There's also the musical, which Cole is in. He's not here tonight because he's-
Beauty and the Beast.
Right, exactly. And that will be Friday and Saturday. Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00.
If board members want to go to that, you know, let me know. We'll work to get tickets for folks.
I just got tickets today. The matinee is close to sold out, so I'm a little missed to go Saturday.
I have sat in, just if I can for a second. I've sat in just to watch some of their rehearsal stuff going on last... Wait, what was it? What did we have the other night? The Citizens Budget Group was going on and we were in the district conference room and you know, that's kind of right in the back of the stage, but it was... The cost... I mean, they were doing kind of a dress rehearsal type thing, but really, really exciting. Be a great opportunity for, you know, younger families to come and really have a good time. Great music, yeah.
And then the third thing is that there's Around the World Community Dinner on the 2nd, which is from 5:30 to 7:00. There'll be Ethiopian food there. And if you're interested, you can contact Susie Merrick at smerrick@sp schools dot net. And there's going to be a band concert for Tuttle 7th and 8th grade from 7:00 to 8:00 on December 9th. And then also a choral concert on the 17th, 7:00 to 8:00 as well. All right. And then also, this is just saying something that I'm really excited about, the Ryeing Club is going to Boston this Friday.
Is that... What's the name of that row? What's the name of the... It's like a regatta, but has a name to it, isn't it? Do you know? Sorry, putting you on the spot. It's not the Wakefield's.
Oh, Charles River. We're going on the Charles River.
Charles River, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep.
Couple other quick things. We just had a 6th grade band concert this week.
Yep.
And were you done, Delaney?
Yeah.
You're done? Okay. So the, yeah, the 6th grade, and those of you who know, the 6th graders, they're the first experiencing their instruments and so it's really neat to see them kind of come from not playing to then playing. And that was, that was great. Also, we had some flu shots that went on for our staff and it's been quite a nice opportunity, a partnership with Hannafords and the pharmacists on their days off participate. And so staff across all five schools, at each school, they have chosen different days and they go there. And this year Doug Franzone, who is a longtime community member, longtime pharmacist, retired from the Hannaford Pharmacy here on Dorset Street, but he brought along, as a desire to keep this going, he brought along two new pharmacists, Janelle Racine and Brianna Robert. And again, to continue this on a going-forward basis. But I do believe that, you know, giving folks the option to get that done in an efficient way right after school, they've been here for... They stay for a couple hours, has allowed for people to get easy access and hopefully stay healthy and available for our students. So just a shout-out to them.
Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 6, City and School Collaboration.
So we had our kind of our last Steering Committee meeting as far as future meetings with leadership of the city and the school district. I haven't been able to nail that down with Kevin yet. I think I made a mistake actually in the last because I think Kevin was not available or Helen and they had some standards and they had emailed me and I caught the email after the event, the proposed date. So I apologized and said, "Let's make sure we have that confirmed on our schedule." So I sent that to Kevin. I haven't heard back. I think he's been away until tomorrow, so I hope to hear back from him. But I'll kind of verify that on a going-forward basis.
This is for the next Steering Committee?
This is for the next, our kind of inter-leadership, City Council Chair, Kevin, myself and you. So that's-
Because the last... We didn't have the last one because I think this...
I know. I think-
Cancelled that one.
That's right. But I think they also sent me an email after, like we wanted to do this one and I didn't catch it.
Catch it.
So when I say that, I just need to get that schedule back on track.
And we did, David and I did attend the ribbon cutting for Market Street and the new city center. I handled a shovel.
Shoved some dirt.
I was one of about 30 people with a shovel, which was a little scary, but a nice turnout for that and some nice comments from state officials and so forth, so.
I think it was pouring rain or... Actually, it wasn't too bad at the moment.
No, it was the cold day, I think. But do we have an update on Market Street?
Yes, we do have it and Gary's going to give a quick little update here in a minute.
But it was good to have some school presence there and they had a very nice turnout.
Thanks for remembering that, Elizabeth, for me.
All right, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Mm-hmm. So Gary's here. Again, Gary's been instrumental in following along on the 180 Market Street. There's a lot of activity going on there. There's been a lot of activity. So he'll give you some updates on Market Street and 180 also, so thanks, Gary.
Okay, so we'll start with all the good news that Market Street is open and has mostly two-lane traffic in both directions 24 hours a day. So that's certainly been a positive for both our district transportation and parent transportation into Rick Marcott School. So the next phase, the new access road into the Rick Marcott School is underway. There will be some minor disruptions starting where there will be some flaggers on School Street Friday around midday. And then next Monday, they're going to avoid times prior to the bus drop-off and at the bus pickup time. But they'll be removing the islands on the southern end of the parking lot at Rick Marcott to complete the new access and Egress Road. They're also going to... Tomorrow, I'm going to go to a test of a stay mat gravel because SD Ireland is a little concerned that the repurposed pavement will not hold up very well in these temperatures because it's so cold now that they're ready to put it down, colder than they expected. So they're testing a special gravel that compacts better in cold weather and we're going to go take a look at the results of that tomorrow. Other than that, the new parking, the gravel parking lot that SD Ireland is going to install, will start next week.
I have a quick question about that, which is, are we at all concerned that, won't that go right over our current stormwater swale? I mean, we don't have a lot of stormwater remediation on that site, as we know from previous discussions, but the one thing we do have is that little swale that sometimes has like a puddle in it. Are we at all concerned about that or what are we doing with that?
The question was asked. It shouldn't impact anything because they are reconnecting some existing stormwater from that property that drains a portion of our property into the current Market Street system. That's why they had the parking lot or the entrance road dug up last week for one day. That was to connect into the existing stormwater until the new system behind Target is complete.
Okay. Thanks.
Trader Joe's, I shouldn't have said Target. That'd be a long way.
I think we knew what you meant, yeah. I think we knew what you meant.
Garden Street's coming along too, right? We've heard Garden Street's going to be moving along-
It is. It's on its way in. Pretty quickly. If you've seen machinery out there, probably if you're coming out of Rick Marcott or driving Market Street, you'll see on the left, if you're going west, they've got a lot of... They're starting to shape that road in for the connections into Garden Street. So that's also happening. Chamberlain. So Chamberlain noise mitigation update, there's no new update at the present time. We still are out asking for clarity and support on the 10% match. So we're going to keep pushing that. We shared that, as some of you know, we shared it at the legislative meeting that was here some, not that long ago. We shared some of those concerns as well. We've got no additional information on anything related to the 10%. We're going to continue to inquire and push and hope that some of our senators and legislators can help also move that. We have a few other things, probably sending some additional correspondence, but again, nothing new on that.
Yeah, you know, David, I'm a little bit concerned about that, having read and heard the city's feedback, that it appears that there's an expectation that, and even a proposed in-part remedy, that South Burlington would use the airport fuel tax to fund part of the 10% on the home buyout side. So I'm kind of concerned those conversations are going on separate of what we're doing and we had this discussion pretty candidly that the grant wouldn't even be submitted at some point if we don't have either agreed to fund the 10% or have resolution on that. So I'm just kind of wondering in part where the district is in pecking order and if there's a coordinated effort to resolve those issues or even, does there even need to be a coordinated effort?
Well, I think we need to increase the concern in that, number one, we do not believe that the 10% is appropriate for us to pay and that burden needs to shift to either the Burlington, the FAA, or that needs to be resolved in somewhere other than us. And we need to do it in a way that doesn't jeopardize the grant or the grant opportunity that's out there. That's actually, the grant manager is the airport, Burlington Airport, under the auspices of the FAA. So we're going to push, we'll continue to push.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned we're getting caught in a catch-22 here. And I don't know where the airport and where the city of Burlington falls, other than there doesn't seem to be anybody raising their hand to pick up this 10%. And is the city solution the same as the school solution? I don't really know the answer to that, but I think we need to reconcile that pretty quickly because I think we have slightly different venues on that in that we have had the noise testing done already through the FAA's agency, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or their contracted service provider.
Right.
And we did it ourselves.
Right.
Yep. Well, I'll update you some more. We've got work to do. Yep. So that's where we are with that.
I mean, is your question also, Elizabeth, if the city of Burlington is trying to find a workaround with the fuel tax, does that sort of weaken the district's position because we're not negotiating together?
I don't know. I don't know that the city is, has identified that in whole or in part. I think Burlington, my recollection of what I read was that Burlington proposed that as a potential remedy for South Burlington's component of the 10%. And Helen did acknowledge that that was a source of revenue, except there was also the caveat that that revenue was supposed to be used for airport improvement or for specific... It had specific uses tied to it that I'm not really that familiar with.
There was not anything associated with the 10%.
Right, with the 10%. So I just don't know if there should be more of a coordinated effort and if there might be different sources of resolution for our two entities because they are different issues and different agencies involved. Any other questions on that? All right.
So just giving you an update on where we are, given kind of the, where we are with the compliance around, related to the budget component. And Amity's here to just give you a little bit of an update on where we are.
So I've spoken with the auditors and they've been promising us that we'll have an audit by December 22nd, so that'll give us the final budget deficit number at that time. I can report that it will be less than what I reported to you in the 2.4 monitoring report because after field work was done and after the report was issued to the board, they found, they have some audit adjusting entries that we always have, so those were in our favor. And then we consequently have received more money from the state for special ed reimbursement because the percentage was higher this year than it had been in the past and when we estimated when we finished our final seer. So those numbers will be positive as meaning they will reduce the deficit that I had reported.
I don't think the mic is on.
I don't think-
No, we don't have amplification. I didn't bring it in, I'm sorry. I can go run and get it here in a second.
So that's the report on where we are right now with the deficit.
One question.
Yeah.
December 22nd?
Yes.
Is it Sunday?
So, I'm sorry, so it's the Monday.
Okay, so the 23rd.
Yes.
Okay, and our board meeting after that is going to be January 8th because New Year's Day. So would it be possible to have that emailed out to us when it's available?
Sure, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
You know, David, this isn't on the agenda, but the board did get a couple of communications from largely parents and guardians regarding the fact that we've had two snow days already.
Yes.
So I thought it might be helpful if you could just spend a minute-
Sure.
-updating. We need to respond to the specific folks that sent us notes, but just the rationale that's used and kind of the why and...
Yep. So you're right, we've had two days, the second being yesterday. And so just a little bit of an update on how we go about making the decision or how I do. We definitely utilize the forecasting technology and we work collaboratively with the city of South Burlington and their Public Works Department and our own people. But we look at the forecast, the hour-by-hour forecast, which is some great technology, which is highly accurate and it actually proved to be very accurate this last storm. And the reason what constitutes a cancellation would be travel, safe travel for our buses, our students on buses, travel for our student drivers and parents and guardians that have to make the travel. And then third is really for our staff to be able to make it in, in that order. If any one of those at travel times is depicted by the forecast that has concerns related to transportation of any of those, then we will consider a cancellation, depending on when it might get better. And in this particular case, yesterday, the actual improvement did not happen until after 10 o'clock. And so driveway, sidewalks, particularly secondary roadways, unsalted areas of the city were the major concern. And some people may say, "Well, that's the community's need," but again, as children need to either get in the cars, get on buses, these are where accidents and unsafe practices can happen. So that was the reason for the cancellation. It was a close call yesterday for being able to delay two hours to get it in. We can do a one-hour delay, a two-hour delay. We don't have a three-hour delay, but it was considered. And because of the forecast, it was a cancellation yesterday. And for the most part, the forecast was spot-on. And again, it's just one of those things. That would be the case if it was at the end of the day too. It may be an early dismissal. We do look at that as well. Or the middle of the day. If we can be in school and it can snow and we can clear things up and have safe travel for those entities, then so be it. Obviously, we are influenced by the news and the local forecasters. If you, you know, if you watch the early morning news and local news, you'll see a whole lot of information relative to, you know, watches and warnings. And that's, you know, that's something that also parents pay attention to. We generally, we send out notification at 5:45 is when the call starts and we post up the notification on the bottom on the Vermont-area broadcasters, which is all the TV channels, and that scrolls on all of the local channels. That starts a little bit earlier, around 5:30. If we wait too much longer, then we have our islands and Georgia buses en route and we can put them in jeopardy if we haven't made a decision earlier. So there's a real need to make some proactive decisions that is hard, given that you know, it's based on forecast. But again, as I said, the forecast data is really, really strong. It's a lot stronger than it used to be. In my early, early years, there would be some decisions made and I remember coming in and, you know, and schools was canceled and it's really sunny and nice out. Didn't feel so good, but that's where we are. In our current calendar student, we have 180 student days. The law requires 175, so, you know, we pay attention to the days. And it's early, we get it. We're November and we've got a long winter ahead, so there's a few concerns right now. Thanks.
Thanks.
I don't know if everybody has questions related to snow.
Risk of the high school graduation getting moved though?
No. The only time that would happen is if we went below 175 days for the students at the high school. So again, we have some buffering there. And typically, we would probably ask for a waiver. We try to keep that high school graduation date set just because a lot of plans begin to get put in place for people coming and that celebration happening. So we could drop below 175 for them, the seniors. We wouldn't do it for the remaining, you know, 9th through 11th graders.
Okay, let's move on. Agenda item 8, Master Planning and Visioning.
Okay, so we were supposed to be on tonight with the architects. They were supposed to come and sort of present where the design landed at this stage. They are working really hard tonight and tomorrow night to try to get the package off to the cost estimator and to the construction company so those cost estimates can come in in December as we had hoped. So they asked for a little dispensation for tonight. So my plan was to sort of see how many people were here who may or may not have seen the presentation previously. I know there are folks watching at home who may not have seen the full presentation, but a lot of the background information is on the website and previous presentations and recordings and things. So I think what tonight I'm going to do is give you a little update on the process, just a few slides on the design as far as it got the last time they did a presentation, and then just what the process looks like. So this will be a much shorter agenda item than we had originally anticipated. So in terms of the process, right now, working group meetings are continuing on a regular basis. On every other Wednesday morning, our most recent full working group meeting was last Wednesday. In the meantime, usually on the alternate Wednesday, there's other work going on. So the project website, there was a meeting today. Our financial advisors were in town to work on some preliminary projections with us with regard to different potential financing scenarios. So that work is continuing. And that's kind of where we are. So as I said, architects sending off a package to both potential, or both cost estimators on Friday. They expect to get numbers back from them in sort of late December and reconcile those two cost estimates. And then sort of early January, as soon as we're back, really, we'll sort of be out with those numbers. So that's the plan there. And then I can just run through a couple of slides on where the design got to. So those are our current plans. It doesn't look too different from what folks have seen in previous presentations. One of the big things to note is the middle school looks slightly different than it did in some of our earlier presentations in October, for example. So the three pods, if you will, that represent the sort of structure for the teams, those are now two-story pods and they're all on the east side of the middle school. And the band and chorus room, we'll get into the floor plan a little bit more, is now kind of wrapped around the gym. So it looks slightly different in terms of an overall plan at the middle school side. The high school doesn't look too different than it has in previous presentations, nor does the physical education and athletic center. This massing study, again, I just wanted to show one last time, it has not been updated for those changes to the middle school, but it still just gives everyone a sense of where the project would sit on the site. We have gotten some emails and questions about that and how the new buildings would fit on the current site or whether they're going to be on a different site. So some people are coming at this completely fresh and didn't realize that we're building on the same site. So this is where generally the building would be on the current campus. Overall floor plan, again, these are all available online, so you can look at them in closer detail. Everything to the left-hand side, sort of to the left of this gap here. Let me just step over the cords without tripping. Everything sort of from here over is the middle school and then this is the high school. And then, of course, this is the physical education and athletic center. And we'll go through floor plan for the middle school a little bit because as I said, it's changed just a bit. So the middle school first floor, the green section is the middle school, high school kitchen, that's a shared kitchen. And then just to the left of that, also green, is the dining commons for the middle school. The orange sections are the gym, the locker rooms, the health classroom. That little orange box up there is one of the health classroom for the middle school. And then each of these little pods at the top would be one house. So right now, we're divided into six houses, two for each grade. So this would be the first floor. There would be three houses on this floor and three houses on the second floor. The elevators are right there, these two little sort of gray boxes right next to the gymnasium. They're sort of centrally located, right at the top of the Heller upstairs for the dining commons and next to the gym and sort of centrally located for all of the different parts of the building. The red sections are all of the arts and technology and fab lab and those kinds of things. So art would be on this north side and band and chorus down to the west side of the gymnasium. Those are all one-story classroom parts of the building. That was done to make sure that there was natural light in all of those classrooms as well as in the gym. So the gym, because it's a two-story ceiling, there would be windows across the top to sort of get some natural light into there. So this leaves us really with very little interior space at all. Really, the only people who are sort of missing out are some of the admin and guidance staff who might have an interior office in those blue sections down to the lower right-hand of the plan. And then this is just the second floor. So again, the white parts just represent where there's sort of nothing on the second floor. Then there is another layer of pods. The yellow part down to the right, you probably can't read from the audience, is library and media center. So it would be on the second floor. The red section is multimedia, time lab and TV studio, so some of those more arts and production-oriented things. Those sit on top of the administration, which is on the first floor. The orange part that's shown here is a walking track around the sort of second level of the gymnasium. That is going into the cost estimator. It's one of those things that they're going to ask the cost estimator to estimate what it would look like with that and without that, so we can talk about that in the next stage of design. And then we have the first floor of the high school. So again, the green part to the furthest left is the shared kitchen and then to the right is the dining commons for the high school. All of the purple sections are kind of building infrastructure and custodial and where deliveries would be made for the whole building, those kinds of facilities. All the red represents performing and visual arts. So the art classrooms would be at the- So the art classrooms would be at the very top of this, although some of the art fabrication spaces like the art flex, which would be sort of a fabrication space that would have to do with things like fabric and softer materials and things. Those are kind of grouped with some of the other tech fab spaces, all in a group right there next to the dining commons. And then around to the back of, you can see where the seats are right under the word theater there, that would be 500 seats on the first floor. And then the stage, which is much bigger than the current stage that we have. And then around to the back are ensemble rooms, practice rooms and places where kids can change when they're getting ready for productions and those kinds of things. And then off to the right, one of the bigger boxes, which you may be able to read, is chorus. That's a chorus room that can also double as kind of a black box theater depending on, on our needs at any given moment, but it would be the main chorus room for chorus rehearsals and those kinds of things. Then the blue sections over these two blue wings over here are classroom wings and those wings will be three stories tall. They're grouped, as we've talked about in previous presentations, thoughtfully around adjacencies. So this upper wing, for example, would be a science and math wing sort of surrounding these yellow spaces, which are the extended learning areas that we've talked about in other presentations where there's really space for collaboration on project work or interdisciplinary work. And those would all have passive supervision from the classrooms so that teachers can kind of see what students are working on and how they're getting along out in the hallway if they are, are working on collaboration for those types of, of problem solving, project type work. And then the lower parts would be more humanities classrooms, lower on this, this plan, but as we're looking at it. And then the light blue section here is all admin and sort of all of the, the security that sort of comes into, as you come into the building. And that's really been thoughtfully laid out to make sure that we ensure that there's, there are sort of different levels that you kind of have to get through to get into the school. Once, it'll be of course open in the morning when everyone's coming in, but there are sort of different layers of security there at the front entrance. Second floor, again, on the blue sections, another layer of classrooms. The light green slash yellow off to the far right is the first floor of what we're calling a media center. It's essentially the library plus a lot of things that get added into a library these days. And so the first floor of the library is sort of right at the top of the stairs that would come from the dining commons up to that hallway. And that is meant to be a place where students can come to collaborate and work on projects and those kinds of things as well. That would be a slightly noisier part of the library. On the next floor, on the final floor of the high school, when we get there, you'll see there's another layer of the library that's meant for quieter study. And there will be some study carols and, and more books and things on that second level. The dining commons, just says dining commons below because it's really a two-story space. So there's nothing on this, on this floor for the dining commons. And then this whole sort of purplish-blue section around to the left of the, of the page is a hub for business and career and big picture. So our big picture program, for those of you who don't know, is sort of a school within a school. It's really for sort of students who are taking kind of an alternate path and a little bit more independent study. And they do some work in the school and then are off campus for internships and other opportunities. They may be doing sort of some smaller fabrication work or some smaller design work that they don't need quite all the big tools for the, the fab lab and all of that. They have access to those obviously, but these are sort of some spaces for them to work on projects when they are on campus. There's a small presentation space there for them to make presentations, to really demonstrate the learning that they're doing, which is a big part of the big picture program. It's also a space that, you know, colleges can come and make presentations if they're trying to, to talk to students. And then the third floor is really just sort of the classroom wing and that upper floor of the library and media center. Physical education, athletic center, hasn't changed a lot from previous presentations. They didn't really update what the courts on the interior of the track looked like, but it's not, it's not the highest priority for discussion really. But right now we've, we're thinking, what they're costing out are three full-size courts and then a smaller reduced size court that could be used for practice, but probably not for, for games. So that really brings us to next steps. As I mentioned before, everything will go to the cost estimator at the end of this week. Sometime in mid to late December, those numbers will come back. There will be a period of reconciliation between the two cost estimates, the two independent ones. And then we'll get a report on that as soon as we're back from the holidays. And then next steps would really be community outreach for those two months leading up to the bond vote. We don't have a date on the calendar yet, but there would need to be a big community meeting where we presented everything from the beginning through the end, as well as tax impact and all of that to the community. And really just trying to get as much information as we can into voters' hands about the project. And then obviously, town meeting is on March 3rd this year. This goes out beyond the bond vote, assuming the bond vote is successful. There would be another about 11 months of design work that would need to go on before things are then put into a construction document phase. Once those are documented in a way that contractors understand, there would be a bidding process that would be relatively short. And then we would expect to begin actual construction on the buildings sometime in March of 2021. So again, this, this is more breakdown of the phasing. This is an older slide from previous presentations, but it just kind of shows this red area down here would be phase one. So essentially what would happen once we got construction started, would there be a fence put up just to the east of our current buildings and contractors would sort of have access to that back half to build the, the new buildings. Phase two would involve moving the students into those buildings and then phase three, which is a much, much shorter phase, about nine months versus about three and a half years. About nine months would be needed to rebuild the playing fields and finish all the parking lots and all the things that would be right along Dorset Street. So questions, comments, thoughts from the board first and then we can open it up for the community?
Bridgette, this is the first time I saw that what the architects are submitting in the cost estimator includes sort of included in and included out vis a vis the walking track at the middle school. Were there any other items like that that were identified by the working team that would go to the cost estimator with sort of keep it in, take it out?
For the most part, what we tried to do was to be conservative. So for example, one of the things that's in the project that's going to the cost estimator is, we looked at a whole bunch of different options and this is just one example of HVAC and geothermal and, and how that might be incorporated into the project. The engineers for geothermal and HVAC in general came and made a presentation to us and there were about 10 different potential options. They kind of put the most expensive one in, in terms of what they're, they are sending off to the cost estimator. What has to happen on something like that is they really need to get into digging a bunch of test pits and trying to determine whether one of the lower cost options might be feasible. So we tried for the most part to just be conservative. That was one of those things, though that was kind of an easy thing to say, show us what it looks like with an in and show us what it looks like with an out. But there weren't a whole lot of those, yeah, that were that, that defined and that easy to take in or out. Most of the rest of the things, if we take them in or out, require redesigning some other part to fit something in and that gets a little bit trickier. It just takes more work, so.
A lot of that work happened earlier, as you've heard, you know, we had user group meetings, the teachers, staff, students were part of that. And so that evolution with the architects did, did lend itself to some re, you know, reconfiguration work leading up to, again, I think as, as Bridgette said, those, those two examples, the HVAC and the heating design, that was an option. And, and the, the walking track, again, that was important, just to kind of see what would be the, the add-in, the add-out.
And any specific feedback from the bond folks at this point?
They ran through some initial potential options with us. They need to do some more work on the legal side. So they really need to sit with Bob Fletcher and really talk through some of the things. They gave us some just, some broad ideas, but some of those have to be refined to make sure that they're compliant. So for example, you know, the options that they really shared with us today had sort of level payments all the way through. They really need to explore more deeply. Our understanding is that Vermont is a level principal payment state, so you have to sort of take out a bond and your principal payments are level. That means your interest payments change over time as, as you're paying down principal. But the question is, is that a complete, does it have to be exactly level principal or does it have to be within a band? Like no payment can be a certain percent higher than any other payment? And is there a period? My understanding from my own work is that, that there is the potential in the law for interest-only payments for the first few years of a long-term bond and then moving into, you know, the full debt service. So they need to go back and sort of sharpen their pencils a little bit on that and then we're working to schedule with them, once they've done that next iteration, what that looks like as it's run through the Vermont school funding model to see what that means for tax impact.
One more, one question, Bridgette. So was there any rationale for why they changed the middle school from three stories to two?
It, it was basically, so it's a little complicated. We originally had three stories so that there would be these two, these three, you know, sort of grade level pods stacked on top of each other. And then there was a third pod that was going to be band and chorus and art and all of that. And, and on top of that, there was going to be a seventh pod. So there were six that we have now in terms of potential future use or expansion if we have a higher number of students, there was a seventh one. After a lot more deep discussion, it really turned out that that seventh pod was a really awkward way of managing potential capacity growth and that it made more sense to add on an additional classroom to each of the six pods and sort of figure out capacity that way as opposed to trying to have this mixed age, you know, seventh classroom because that would bring up all kinds of issues of equity. You know, parents would be asking, well, why was my child assigned to that or why were they not assigned to that? And, you know, it would just really mean that certain students were getting a different kind of experience than other students. So that was a real deep discussion that, that took a lot of hours of time amongst the middle school educators and staff to sort of determine what was best about that. And as I said, it seemed better once they started to reconfigure that to spread band and chorus and art around the gym to sort of make best use of natural light and all of that. And then still leave open, it's not really in any of these slides, but there's sort of a dotted line on some of the slides that shows where if we really had an influx of students, you know, if all of the housing that potentially could be built in the southeast quadrant is built and, you know, 15 years down the road, we find that we don't have enough capacity. There's sort of a dotted line that says, you know, we could add on another pod, you know, or, you know, however many stories we need sort of to the west side. And so that, this just was sort of the best configuration that the architects could come up with to sort of meet all these competing demands that kind of came up as we had discussions with the middle school team.
The core areas though were, you know, are sized to be able to do that because that's one of the things, if you do see growth increase, you know, does that mean we, cafeteria or, you know, kind of the learning commons areas or the gym spaces, you know, those, those have the ability to kind of, you know, expand the needs, you know, not by huge numbers, but to accommodate.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern in talking about the number of stories that we build these buildings in is that what, you know, what's going to happen, you know, several generations from now, 40 or 50 years from now? And we're going to be past capacity, but we've got limited acreage on this campus to build. So if, if we can't build out, we have to build up. And if we end up building out more, then we lose, you know, a lot of good space on the outside and it becomes more like a, you know, like a concrete jungle rather than a mix like we have now.
Well, Bridgette went, I mean, as she said earlier, there's, there's, that was thoughtful conversation around if we do have to, what are the options? And so on, on the, on the presentations that's, that are on the, on our web, website and in these various presentations, you'll see where there's delineation around future opportunities to expand. It doesn't then mean you got to take something else down in order to do, to do that.
Yeah.
So there was some thoughtful conversations, but not to build it, you know, for the, you know, the forecasted enrollment that's, that doesn't yet exist.
Yeah. Okay, open it up. Go ahead.
Yes?
So two questions. How much of the architectural components of the new construction that you proposed was based upon Dora Whittier's, Dora Whittier's experience in building new schools in Massachusetts? In other words, how much of the construction did they come and say, this is what we did here and this is what you can do with your school? Is there any comparative analysis?
I don't think that it's possible to put a number or a percentage on how much of their Massachusetts experience factors into this. I, I, that's not, it's a qualitative thing that you're trying to ask me to put a quantitative number on, so.
Okay, so let me ask you another question. Does anybody on the board know how the communities in Massachusetts, which either renovated schools or built new schools, paid for those schools? So again, the question is, do you know how the communities in Massachusetts, which either renovated or built new schools, paid for those new construction or renovations?
I, I don't know, Jerry, how to distinguish the renovation versus the build, but I do know there's more capital funding available within Massachusetts for schools and that doesn't exist in Vermont. So I, I can't speak to the renovation versus the building side of it. But to your first question, I know, you know, Doren Whittier obviously has some experience in Massachusetts. The working team did tour some schools in Massachusetts, but my understanding is that it was the working teams within our own district that really tested the space requirements for, for our needs. So whether they were leveraged against an original design that might have been predicated on a Massachusetts experience, I, I can't say or not, but, but I think what we're seeing now is a direct product of what our teams, students, educators, parents, community members input to that. I, I don't know, Bridgette, if you have any additional information on the renovate versus build and?
The key feature is not renovation versus build. In Massachusetts.
It's the, the funding.
Funding construction is one penny. The six and a half cent sales tax in Massachusetts is dedicated for public school construction.
We understand. No, there's a Massachusetts School Building Authority and that, certain communities use it, certain communities do not, based on there's a backup in terms of applying for Massachusetts School Building Authority money. So communities have to sort of weigh how much they get from that versus funding it through property tax. So it's different community to community and they've, they've chosen. But for the most part, yes, they use Massachusetts School Building Authority funds to fund a certain percentage. Depending on what they're building, the School Building Authority pays more or less for different types of space. So certain spaces, they fund very highly, up to 80%. Certain spaces, they don't fund at all. So if you're adding on administrative space, for example, the percentage is much lower than if you're adding on classroom space. Likewise, gyms, those kinds of things get funded at a very low percentage versus a higher percentage for, for, you know, band or chorus rooms, those kinds of things.
And to my knowledge, I think, I don't think there's any architect firm currently in Vermont that has any current building new schools in Vermont because we haven't built any new schools in Vermont in the last several years. So all the experience would be based somewhere other than Vermont, you know, for the firms within Vermont.
Right. So conversations I had with the building agents again in Massachusetts, they told me that the money they, they've distributed $14 billion of money since their inception to public school building and the minimum amount they distribute is 31% of the cost of new construction. And that's goes to the wealthiest communities. The poorest communities in Massachusetts get reimbursed to 80% of the cost of new construction. So my question about how much of the architecture of this building is carryover from the experience from Massachusetts is a question which has to do, are you comparing apples and apples or are you comparing apples and watermelons? Because a lot of the money which is required to build the schools in Massachusetts comes from a source outside the community where the building is being built. I don't think that's a minor issue. So if Dora Whittier came and said, this is what we did in Massachusetts, this is what you can do here, it's not apples and apples, it's apples and watermelon because in those communities, massive amounts of the project's cost is not borne by the community where it stays. taking place. It's just an important piece of information as far as I'm concerned. That's where they have the experience. They brought that experience here and now I'm just wondering a little bit whether some of the construction you're invested in here is from their experience there where the spending of money is totally different than the spending of money here. We're responsible for the construction here in Massachusetts, somewhere between 31 and 80% of the cost is borne through the sales tax. And the Massachusetts budget is between six and seven times greater than the budget in the state of Vermont. So there's a lot more money in Massachusetts than there is in Vermont. You don't want to compare Massachusetts to Vermont. It's comparing apples to watermelons.
Yeah, I never, I never got that sense, Jerry, that that was the case. I mean, Doran Whittier is Vermont-based and understands Vermont funding system. So I never got the sense that there was sort of a, you know, taking a, a project that might have been funded through a different mechanism and parking it in a different state was ever the, the main driver, so.
No, so I was just saying, if they built construction in Massachusetts and they designed various types of features into the new school buildings, they may have said, you know, worked with the community and said, this is what you can do. And the community and the architect knew that 31 to 80% of the cost was not going to be borne by the community. That clearly can influence the decisions that the architect and the community makes as to what's going into it. I, I just think that's an important point, but I won't be there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know all of the details of the Massachusetts Building Authority, but I know there's some pretty
We're done with the presentation.
Pretty, there's some pretty specific scrutiny that's placed on what you can and can't because if you build something, you know, larger than you're supposed to, then that will negate your funding option. So, you know, to the idea that, you know, the architect firm in the community could say, well, we want to do this bigger or fancier, the building authority is very, very active from my understanding to say, you can do it, but you only qualify for this because you're building it bigger or you're doing a different product or whatever the case. So there's some pretty heavy guardrails and I think to Bridget's point, those guardrails are sometimes so specific that some communities say, we're not going to, we're not going to utilize the building authority to do that. We, we had some of that as well when we were, you know, in Vermont, way back when we had the 30% construction aid. There was a lot of project scrutiny that you could go with something, but if you didn't have defensible demographic data, you know, they were only going to do certain things based on certain square footage requirements. If you wanted to still do it, then you're going to have to pick up, figure out that cost. And it obviously wasn't a much different place. But there is some scrutiny by states that, that places that.
And I suppose they said from the moment a grant request is submitted, they work with the community on every aspect of the projects. I absolutely agree with you. However, when a community and an architect knows that a large percentage of the cost of the project is being borne by a third party, it can influence what you put into that new construction. Okay, so I made the point. The second question, you said with the bonding agency, it may be possible to defer principal and only pay interest for a couple of years? Just want to make sure I understand correctly.
That is my understanding, but the legal counsel needs to sit with our financial advisor and, and understand that, the exact parameters around that better.
So when the final cost is available, will we be told the cost of the bond over its entire lifetime? So you can play with numbers upfront, but will we learn the entire cost of the bond?
Yes, 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 of course.
Other questions? Yes.
So speaking of the community and the community outreach, Bridget, can you talk a little bit more about the timing of that? Looks like that window's, you know, not a big window from like January through the end of February. So are you going to springboard into more community outreach initiatives, like heavy-duty type of initiatives, once the bond information and the cost to the taxpayer has been more or less finalized? What's the timing of that situation?
Yes, I mean, that is what is meant to happen as soon as we're back really from the holidays is to, to springboard into, as I said, it would start with one community meeting, but there would be multiple community meetings with different groups of people. And we don't have the exact plan, but we're working on that. And we're working on materials already so that those materials are ready for that effort.
And where would those big meetings happen? Probably not in this library, correct?
What we've done in the past is use the high school auditorium as necessary for those. It just really depends on whether it's a really broad community meeting or whether it's a specific group or, you know, basically we'll, we'll find the venue, whatever we need.
And we hope for large attendance. We've been, again, we had a PTO meeting, was it Tuesday night?
Monday night.
Monday night?
Monday night.
Yeah, and, you know, that was fairly well-attended for us. I wanted to increase the number. I think it was somewhere around 20, 25 folks showed up. So that was really positive, I think, for that school. And we're going to be doing them at the other schools. And then we have, as Bridget said, we have a whole, you know, series of communications that need to, need to get out. And again, a lot of good questions have come out of the meetings and we've been adding to our, those frequently asked questions. And where we can work on our response, we've been doing that. Where we don't, we've been saying, hey, we need some help with how this might work. Some have to be parked until we have more detailed information about the financial work, as Bridget said. So a lot of this is kind of fast-tracked, phased, what have you, but we're, we're doing the best we can to, number one, understand it ourselves, then get it out and be able to respond to questions.
Well, I hope you can fill the auditorium.
Yes. And hopefully you can help us.
Other questions, comments?
Yes.
Yeah, I know this is late in the, in the process, but I'm curious as to why we've been hearing so much about schools closing, why we need to build a bigger school, what's wrong with our school.
I, I'll give you just, the, the quick summary is that, yes, enrollment across the state overall is declining. In South Burlington, it is growing. We have a demographer who updates our projections every two years or so. Our most recent ones were updated earlier this year. And we have about 925 students in the high school right now. The theoretical capacity of the high school is about 880 students, so we're slightly overcrowded now. And we're projected to have another 125 students in the high school with, over the next 10 years. So it's expected to grow over the next 10 years. And that is based on housing that is permitted already. So that's sort of housing that's reasonably down the path of, of being built. And then other demographic factors that the demographer puts into his model about how quickly housing turns over, you know, what the age, you know, stratification looks like in South Burlington, how many people move in, how many people move out. So there are a lot of reasons that we're thinking about new schools. One of them is, you know, growth in student population. One of them is, I won't go through the whole list that we've talked about, but I can certainly, if you'd like to give me your information, I can share some resources with you. Really, we started this whole process a few years ago and in 2018 had a report that was done about the infrastructure of the schools and really what the, the engineers and the architects found as they reviewed the middle school and the high school are that those buildings have been well-maintained. We've, we've done a lot of hard work to maintain them and the community's been supportive of that, but they're at the end of their usable life because there are certain infrastructure elements like HVAC systems and electrical systems and those kinds of things that are original to these buildings that are difficult to maintain going forward simply because they are, they're obsolete at this point. And so we did a whole, another year after that of looking at different options all the way from just renovating infrastructure and what those costs would look like. And that would mean not really doing any changes that would impact education, just making sure the buildings kept going, all the way up through some upgrades to just core spaces to sort of handle the bigger student population that we have. So that would be upgrades to things like the cafeteria, the gym spaces, the auditorium because our auditorium at the high school seats about 450 people when we have about 925 students. So we, we looked at renovation options that kind of got us those core spaces. The tricky thing at the high school in particular is that there are load-bearing walls between all the classrooms, which makes it hard to reconfigure the classrooms in a way that allow us to really match the, the facilities to the teaching model that we're using now. So there's been a whole discussion about that. So for a lot of reasons, we looked at options from infrastructure only to infrastructure at the middle school plus a new high school. We looked at all these different options. And we basically got to the point where we looked at full renovation of both buildings to get the educational impact that we were looking for as well as upgrade the infrastructure. When you look at those kind of renovations where you're really changing classroom spaces and all of that, those got to the point where they were very close to, and in some cases, depending on, on which option you looked at, higher than building new buildings for various reasons. So the board made a decision in June to look at building a new middle high school building. And then again, in September, we had another vote to choose between five concepts that the architects developed to sort of address what we were hoping to address with the new buildings. So yeah, I'm happy to share it there. On our website, there is sort of a, not sort of, there is a tab that has a lot of information, a lot of the presentations that have been made, a lot of the different studies and things, the reports from those phase two. Phase one was the infrastructure, phase two was sort of the educational impact study. Those are all in the website. As I briefly mentioned earlier, we are working on a separate project website that's a little more clearly organized than what we have right now and just sort of highlights the things that are particularly useful. Right now, what we have is kind of a repository of, of everything that's been shared. And then the new website would just be a little bit clearer and easier to navigate, I think. So that's kind of where we are now. Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, I'm looking at the picture and, not the one that's up there, but, and I'm wondering how much was considered in green building rather than having these huge open spaces that absorb heat and use up a lot of resources.
So there are, there are three slides that were not in this presentation tonight that really talk about the focus on that. So there are a lot of factors that have factored into the new buildings. One of them is that the building envelopes for the new buildings would be much more energy efficient than the current buildings in terms of savings of, of energy. And then there are a lot of new technologies that can go into these buildings that reduce usage of things like electricity and displacement ventilation systems, which I had never heard that phrase before I got involved in this project, displacement ventilation systems that are more efficient in terms of heating and cooling. And cooling is one issue at the high school. We only have cooling in certain sections of the building that has been added on, sort of retrofitted in certain sections of the building that were almost unusable during certain parts of the year without it. But for the most part, the high school doesn't have air conditioning and that's becoming a little bit of a factor in the shoulders of the school year and the beginning and the end of the school year. So a lot of thought has been put into that. The physical education and athletics center, they've kind of designed that angled roof that was very briefly shown tonight on the massing study, that would be ready for solar panels. So one of the things that will have to be discussed later on is how we would finance that, whether that would be an upfront cost that we would bear or whether we would work with another agency as we've done, for example, with the, the solar at the landfill. There are lots of different ways of financing solar. So Doran Whittier's, basically, the, the building that's going off to the cost estimator is what they call net zero energy ready. So it doesn't necessarily have solar panels factored into what the cost is that we're going to get back, but the building is designed so that it can accept geothermal potential heating and cooling so that it can use solar panels, those kinds of things. The other thing is that they have very, they're very thoughtful of last, the last several, the last projects for the last years from Doran Whittier, up to 95% of building materials have been recycled. So they're very conscious of, of those kinds of things. So when they take down the old buildings, making sure that those go to appropriate spaces and are reused wherever they can be. So yes, there's been a lot of thought put into the green side of the building and making sure they're as efficient as possible. Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
Just make one comment to your point. With regard to the new educational structural features that they're talking about, there's no objective data that I know of to show all those rearrangements lead to higher quality educational outcomes. They are ideas, but they are ideas with no substance in terms of improving the education that already exists in South Burlington.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item nine, the FY 2021 budget.
Did you have something to say?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
So I know that there's a lot of emphasis on the phys ed side of it, which is really amazing and I think that's awesome because we want to keep us, ourselves happy but, and healthy. But I was just wondering like how we're going to build on like the science and sciences and maths and humanities and if there's going to be like dissection rooms or like plant rooms or stuff like that or if that's like in the future for us at all? Because I know a lot of the kids at the school are really passionate about those things and they're not necessarily able to go out and be able to get that hands-on experience. So I was just wondering if that would be any
Yes, and there are a lot of those features and I would have to have Doran Whittier here, frankly, to answer what is in the final, final that has gone off to the cost estimator because there were a lot of discussions about, you know, do we have, you know, space for plants? Do we have space for animals? Do we have space for, you know, all of these different features? And honestly, those were discussions amongst the faculty and the architects and administrators. And the other thing to say about that is that some of those things, it's more about making sure that there's the right square footage. And then there, like I said, there's another 11 months of design work that goes on after a bond vote. The bond vote kind of sets a budget that sort of says whether the community is willing to support this size building and this structure that we're talking about. And then, you know, details about what exactly is in each of those science rooms and what gets allocated where in those science rooms will still be up for discussion to a certain extent. So yeah, I can't answer that question. But the whole idea of adjacencies, of having science and math adjacent to one another, having, you know, engineering and technology close to science so that you can be working on a project and, you know, maybe
Yeah.
working in a science room and very easily move between that and fabrication and, you know, having all of those things together was really one of the driving factors for how those classroom wings were designed. We did not, I, there, I know for a fact there's no greenhouse in the plant, like a full greenhouse.
Yeah.
But in terms of plants and the actual details of what will be in, in each science room, I would have to defer to people who are, are closer to those specifics.
Thank you.
So one final point I think that I'd like to make is just informing the taxpayers and the voters. Like I think there's so many, including myself, I'm not fully informed, but I think there's so many people who are just not informed at all
Yeah.
about what's happening. So how are you going to properly inform the, the voters in January and February so that they can make an informed decision? How are you going to do that?
I think it's, it continues to do exactly what, what you've said. And we, we need to broadcast the community meetings, we need to invite them in different ways, we need to get, you know, communication out, again, using, using all of, all of our avenues from our websites to our local papers, doing, you know, some press releases, you know, media, all kinds of things. I mean, so we're looking for ideas and suggestions. If you have some that you think we're missing, you know, as Bridget said, we're going to start to populate all of those. And again, we have some things that are contingent upon additional information needed, right? We need to allow the, the Doran Whittier work and then the cost estimator work so that we can get, you know, better, better data on numbers so we can start to get out the tax component connected to that. So we
We are working with communications from those to get information out and get information in people's hands because we do want everybody to be well-informed when they go to the, the voting booth.
Can I just make a real quick comment? Burlington passed a $70 million something bond recently and it turns out they're going to need more like 90. And I think it's pretty important that we don't make that, that mistake here. So we've got to get it down and we've got to get it right.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not there yet.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Let's get one more.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
It just feels incredibly decadent in our present world to be spending, to be doing this massive thing when we have buildings. I just, I don't understand it. You know, there, there are places that don't have water and we are destroying two buildings to recreate something that, that I just don't understand the thinking.
Yeah, I think, if I can add a little perspective, you know, I've heard some arguments made sort of other needs in the world and in the community. And from a school board perspective, you know, we're not asking the community to choose between two needs, but when we went through phase one, we, we have been persuaded and we know this just from the age of our buildings and the, and the life of the infrastructure that Bridget alluded to, that we at a minimum will likely be coming to the community for a series of, you know, five to $10 million bonds that just improve, I, I call them low gratification projects, but they really improve aged infrastructure. And when we started down that road, it, it really brought us to, okay, what do we want to do to, you know, what are the really brought us to, okay, what do we want to do to, you know, what are the, what are the needs of our community and our student population, our staff going out the next 50 years? Because somebody made a decision to put these facilities up 50 or 60 years ago, and we started to look at the longer term picture, given the fact that we knew we were looking at a baseline of 50 to $55 million. And that's what brought us into the next phases. So, I look at it not so much as a choice between the many needs that we have from a social standpoint, but really our obligation as a board, not, not to, you know, personally, I don't feel like I have the, the right to ask any individual community members to sort of pony up with a lot of money to fund this. But, I do have an obligation as a board member to say, these are needs that are, are going to be real, either in the infrastructure improvements or in the broader sense of an investment that will be have, have to be made, sort of, if not now, when, that really are the next generation of facilities for another 50 or 60 years. So, that's the obligation, I feel, as a board member, to take that choice to the community of recognizing that there are going to be infrastructure requirements regardless, that maybe now is the time to look at the longer term view and say, is this the time to make the investment for the next 50 or 60 years at a minimum for the future, you know, future generations of South Burlington students and their families?
I'm actually, I have no concern about my taxes, really, honestly. I, you know...
I do.
Education is the most important thing in my mind. So, if you want to raise my taxes to pay for children to be educated, that's fine. My concern is, we're talking about, so in 50 years or 60 years, we're going to tear that down and build another one. I mean, there are buildings that exist for hundreds of years in other countries that they use. We didn't kick everyone out of the capital. You know, we, we use buildings, and, and here we, we destroy buildings to build new ones, and then considering 60 years, we'll do it again. And I just...
Well, our hope is not. I mean, our hope is, is that we'll get longer life as technology and materials and all of those things. But, again, 60, 70 years ago, we used product and material that are now known to not be healthy when you renovate. And, and the cost to mitigate those things are, are expensive. Our hope is that we're going to be using product and material that if we need to do an add-on or an add-up, we have the flexibility to do so without having to. Or, we can access their handling units, or we can access the heating plants in a much easier way. For me to, for us to speculate whether or not we can go, you know, you know, 80, 90, 100 or more, I have, we have no idea, of course, what the technology will be in the future and what kind of efficiencies and systems will be there. But, the hope is that we, we're designing it for a long period of time, you know?
Jerry, one more.
The alternative perspective is you don't have to go to foreign countries. You can go to the University of Vermont, where many of the buildings are over 100 years old, and they take great pride in maintaining those buildings.
And they've had to work hard at figuring out how to, how to make them handicap accessible, and they're still doing that, Jerry.
But, this is Vermont, David. There's an environmental ethic. Reduce, reuse, recycle. Whenever you can, don't build new if you can take what you have and allow it to accomplish the task at hand. That's all I'm saying.
Well, UVM's put some properties up, I think, that are new, correct?
They have, because, and they've destroyed open space for it, but they've done it because they want to emphasize the STEM sciences more. So, the new buildings are science buildings, and they're trying to say, this is the rec, this is the way the economy's going. We have to keep up with it. It wasn't that they were saying, we don't like our buildings here because they kept the old buildings. They just wanted to move in a bigger way to the STEM sciences. That's their decision. It's not a question of a lust for building new. They felt STEM was big, and they had to make a big investment to capture the students who wanted to go into the STEM sciences.
Well, again, we're happy with our, our, our college partners, you know. We, they're important to our educational opportunities for our kids, but we also know that there's been significant amount of, of, of decisions made to make those usable for the long term or to add newnesses to, like, student centers, et cetera, right? So...
The university also has some very wealthy donors, David, which I don't think we have at South Burlington. And that helps a little bit.
All right. We will move on to 2021 budget presentation.
So, I'm going to ask, so I'm going to ask Gary to come forward and, and walk you through, I think, by your place. We have some stewardship information. Again, I think this will be fitting conversation for what, what we just were going through. And in addition, I'd like to also just, again, this is kind of phase one for us, looking at budget. There's a lot of work currently going on to populate our, our, our budget for FY 21. And I would love to get some conversation from the board at the conclusion of this and what it looks, what you're thinking about for desired guardrails around some budget numbers. Again, it may be too early for you, but again, some, some general ideas would be helpful as we begin to go forward and continue to build the budget. Obviously, this is an important part, too, but it would be nice to get some general ideas from the board on what you'd like those guardrails to be. So, thank you, Gary.
So, so in, in general, this is, this is, tonight's look is, is solely at required maintenance for fiscal year 21 to, to inform this budget process. With, with the unknowns of, of the vote on March 5th, like, the three, five, and 10-year look, it is really pretty difficult right now. So, I, I have a good sense, and I have contingency planning that's being done pending the results of the March 5th bond vote, but those, those plans are drastically different, as, as you can imagine. So, we, we, later in the process, I will give you the, the 10-year outlook with some comparisons of what the impact of the vote will bring. But, to, to establish the first step, I focused on what we have to do regardless in FY 21, in, in my opinion, and in collaboration with our facilities folks, our contracted experts from our, from our preventative maintenance, contracted services, and with discussions with David. So, we'll start with the, the district items. These are broken down by the, by the six entities, the district as a whole, and then, and then the five schools. So, the, the primary drivers of the, of the stewardship plan for, for FY 21 for the district are, are really vehicles. There are, there are two replacement budgets or buses scheduled for this year. In, in our plan, we have 30 buses and two vans in our transportation fleet. So, we will replace two of them. Unfortunately, we were hoping that we were going to replace two of them with electric vehicles, but we were not selected for the Volkswagen Pilot Electric Vehicle Bus Program.
Today, right?
Just got that today. It's a little disappointing, but, but we will, we will keep trying. So, two buses, we included in the budget for your consideration and approval of larger loader for snow removal. I mean, we, we struggle pretty hard with our small loader. It's a good piece of equipment, but to clear the main parking lot, it's hours of, of work. So, we're proposing a, a used front-end loader for the maintenance department at $80,000. And then, a, we will include in, in our, in our lease, $30,000 for a new maintenance pickup. We have a Ford Transit that was our HVAC setup vehicle. Nutrition Services, the van that Nutrition Services has used for years has passed its useful life. We would like to transfer the Ford Transit that was the van set up for HVAC to Nutrition Services and replace a multi-use small pickup. And then, replace that vehicle for the maintenance department. Other than that, our district equipment maintenance and repair for all of our kitchens at the five schools is in this portion. And then, $2,000 to extend the life of 400 Dorset, which would probably get us another year. So, that's where we are for the district piece.
On the, on the buses, you've got purchase cost. What is, but it's a lease?
It, it is a lease. So, so we had this discussion last year of, of how to account for that. And in the budget process, we'll, in our actual budget, we'll break down actual cost. But, for the stewardship plan, we use the purchase price for the vehicles every year, and, and it seems to work out that that accounts for past lease payments. Roughly, it equates to the cost that will be in the budget, but we'll give you the exact cost during the budget presentations. But, that's how, that's kind of how I track our capital expenditures on vehicles, is by using the purchase price, not the lease payment.
Yeah, I just, I, how would that account for depreciation, then?
Well, we, we account for depreciation in, in, like, our, our fixed asset plan. Our, actually, our auditors take care of that, those calculations for us.
Okay. I'll just make a note when we get to the final, the final budget, because I, I mean, I feel like our, I realize this is a stewardship plan, but I would expect this to translate to what would show up in a budget?
It does pretty close.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, moving on to the high school. A high school includes only the basic required maintenance to get us through this upcoming year. So, things that we, we believe have got to happen each year for the next four years to keep the high school going, no matter the result of the, of the vote in March. So, we've got, we've got flooring. We know we have some asbestos remediation that, that will have to be done because of deteriorating floor tiles. So, there's a $20,000 there. Our annual gym floor regular maintenance. We have the, to keep our old Autologic controls going, fairly expensive. We have $25,000 there. The elevator inspections and audit. Asphalt upgrades, just to repair, keep the student lot from being so full of potholes that we damage the staff and students' vehicles. We've got a line in there. We do need to re-stripe once, no matter what happens, for the parking lot, for the main parking lots. We have, our auditorium bandroom roof, the surrounding, we're, we're getting some significant leaking on the, on the vertical panels that support that roof. We are, we have talked to our roofing consultant, and we're going to coat those and not replace them for this year. The roof over the...
That's the $10,000, Gary?
That's $10,000, yep. The roof over the kitchen freezer, it's beyond its normal life. It's, it's leaking very bad and, and now starting to sag badly in the middle. So, we're going to locally replace that using our labor and one of our, our hourly carpenters. If we don't, we've got some electrical problems because of water infiltration in that freezer, and the freezer is really expensive and the roof is not, so... Our regular fire alarm upgrades and maintenance, we have, to, $3,000 for rekeying and door hardware, and then one exterior door that needs to be replaced. So, the total bill for the high school for the annual stewardship is $145,500. Moving on to the middle school, so their, their flooring in the, in the, in the flooring plan that we have, hazardous material in the middle school is, is kind of the worst of, of any of our schools. And we have a couple of classrooms that we have to do this year because of their condition. And then, the gym floor has, it sustained some damage this year, and we are, we have decided if you approve that that needs to be sanded and refinished like the high school was a few years ago. That is a one-time cost. We talked back and forth a lot about whether we could keep that thing going, and we'll, we'll look for your input on that. So, our, our normal lighting maintenance cost is, is in there. Our Autologic is in there, which we've had more upgrades at the middle school, so it costs quite a bit less than it does at the high school to keep those, the Autologic working. The elevator work is, is in there for $5,000 for the ADA audits for the elevators. We tried to stretch the hot water tanks. They are at the point now where they have got to be replaced, or they definitely wouldn't make it for the three, three to four years, no matter what happens with the bond vote.
We've had some failures happening, right? Over this last year so far, we've had some failures there.
Yes, we've had several failures in the past year. Parking lot maintenance at the, at the middle school, we just split the total cost of the maintenance between the high school and middle school for the shared lot. To keep that, the, the middle school was scheduled for, for a complete roof reconstruction starting this year. We have deferred that. We delayed that because of the, of the vote in March and the potential for new schools. But, we do have to coat that roof to, to stop the leaking in FY 21 to keep it going. So, there's $30,000 there. We have a, one exterior door to replace, the fire alarm upgrades that are three-quarters of the way complete. We should complete those, and then the key and lock upgrades, for a total of $195,000 at the, at the middle school. Moving on to the elementary schools, where the bulk of our stewardship plan will focus this year. At Chamberlain, our normal lighting, our, what we've done for the past, this will be the third year, is replace two classrooms with carpet tile each year. The next item is HVAC, heating, ventilation, and AC. So, so this is an item that, that I estimated and put in for the board's consideration because of the unknown surrounding the Chamberlain Noise Reduction FAA grant, all that. So, there is $120,000 in there that if the board felt like they needed to take action and that the grant was not coming quickly enough, or there was a problem in funding the grant or approval, that we could get the key classroom portions of the building where learning takes place on our own, we could get those cooled. And we could get the outside penetrations to the building through the unit ventilators closed up and cooled for, for $120,000. So, if, if that money is not required, then there are several options that the, that the board could take to utilize those resources.
Gary, what does, what does that do to address noise mitigation? Because we've, you know, we've heard some preliminary numbers relative to grant funding that could be in the 4 million range. So, what does this...
That is, that is correct.
That's a big difference. What does this give us that...
So, so the difference is, this utilizes split units. It closes the outside penetrations for the unit ventilators, and it allows us to keep the windows closed in the shoulder seasons when it's, when it's hot. It's totally not a new HVAC, HVAC system like the FAA's consultants are recommending. It is a much lower cost, not as efficient, probably less effective overall, but it is a fallback option if there are no others.
Does, does it adequately address noise mitigation?
I believe in the classrooms that it would adequately, adequately address noise mitigation.
And what percentage of the space does this investment cover? And what percentage of the space does this investment cover? You said classrooms, but is it every classroom or just-
It is every classroom on the exterior of the building.
On the exterior, okay.
I mean, part of the FAA solution has been, at least their consultants have been, to look at a complete solution, which involves, you know, an entire upgrade to the heating and ventilating system to include, you know, the dehumidification system that Bridget was referring to earlier of, in the new building. So, they don't, they don't recommend coming in, I mean, because they're trying to come, they're, they have to sustain certain standards. So, part of their cost estimating and program direction to those that did that had to include certain efficiencies and-
It does.
-energy, you know, related matters. And so, that's where that significant difference probably plays into that.
It is. That's a good descriptor. My understanding is that for them to use federal funding for the FAA, to access federal funding for this purpose, there are a whole bunch of energy standards. There was a complete energy audit done at the building, and to meet those standards require the replacement of our entire heating system. We don't have a real HVAC syst-
We don't.
... that involves cooling, but it would replace that whole system so the building could always be closed 12 months a year. So, the Chamberlain, there, we have one roof to replace in our three-year phase plan for roof replacement at Chamberlain for $90,000, for a total of $235,000 this year at Chamberlain. Moving to Orchard, very, very similar costs in each of the elementary schools, except we do have the gymnasium, air handler is beyond its useful life and needs to be replaced. That's a $40,000 estimated cost. We're going to do parking lot striping at Orchard, and the, one of the Orchard roofs, and again, a three-year cycle of replacement is due this year. This one is a bigger one, and it's $190,000. We have got exact costs from the, from our roofing consultant for the square footage at each school of the roofs that need to be replaced under this first year of a three-year plan.
The, the Rick Marcot roof and the Chamberlain roof are definitely easier to the, to the, to the eye to recognize that there's some needs, because they're pitched roofs, and you can tell where some of the asphalt shingles are definitely showing their age, those of you who are aware of some of the asphalt shingle conditions. Where it's much more difficult, and Gary's alluding to the flat roofs, or the membrane roofs that are, this school, the high school, are much, are much more difficult for us to, to be, be able to see, obviously, unless you're up there. And even when you are, then it's much more difficult to actually make an assessment unless you're in the, in the, in the know of how to do that.
And finally, Rick Marcot, we do have, they're the last elementary school in our, in our replacement of the burners. That will happen in FY '21. So, all of our schools will have had new burners. The regular lighting and flooring that we have done at each elementary school for the last several years, and we have the gymnasium roof that needs to be done at, at Rick Marcot in the first year of a three-year roofing replacement plan for $180,000. We did put some, some money in at, for athletic field maintenance and replacement, regardless of the 180 Market Street project and, and how that turns out. The, the baseball backstop is really old, probably getting a little dangerous. There is a, there's a utility pole that's not used there anymore, and an old transformer that needs to be removed. So, we've got some work to do to improve the Rick Marcot athletic fields outside of the 180 Market Street proj, project. So, the total for Rick Marcot is the highest among the elementary schools at $300,000. For a grand total of district capital, stewardship needs of 1.464.5 million.
Is that $180,000 for the roof per year for three years? So, it's a total of almost-
No, it, it's, it depends on the, the square footage. Each, each year, there's a different section of roof that's being replaced, and based on the square footage of that area, they'll fluctuate a little bit.
What was our capital investment last year, Gary? Do you know?
$655,000. And the, the primary difference is that we're beginning the first year of the elementary roof replacement cycle.
You said last year, you're talking-
We're talking-
The year we're in right now.
Talking this year, yes, FY '21.
Remember, we do have a capital reserve fund that was established. I don't know what year that was, '16?
About 15, yeah.
And so, there is $300,000 in the, in the capital reserve fund, and again, there's some conversation that we're having around what, how do we, how do we, how do we do this work on a going forward? Again, some of what you see that Gary's put together is that we've got high-risk areas that we need to address, that if they fail, would significantly set us back in the ability to provide educational opportunities for kids. But those that are not, you know, we're going to run another year whether or not we need to put some money into the capital reserve fund. So, we're going to continue to try to think about that.
And it's important to remember that in the, in your ballot item, that, or the South Burlington ballot item that established the capital reserve, there were two requirements. And, and one, the second requirement was it had to be part of your stewardship plan. So, some of the things are, of the high-risk elements, I made sure that we included funding in the, in the stewardship plan to keep them maintained or make improvements. In case a high-risk item fails, then the capital reserve would be eligible for, for funding the repair of that. If it wasn't in here, we couldn't.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
So, I don't want to leave off, just some general reflection. Obviously, I think you're, you're feeling, you're feeling a little sticker shock, maybe, with the looming implications, but I'm, this may be not the time to ask that question, but just general guardrail perspectives. We typically do this about this time of year, is, you know, what are, what are you generally thinking about budget appetite percentages?
It's, it's probably premature to ask. Why don't we put that on the next agenda?
Yeah. So, I do think it's important. Again, this is one, this is one avenue. It's a big, big, big component.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be helpful for us to get, as we continue to move forward, almost every iteration of budget information, what, how does this represent on, on the whole, given kind of some labor increases that we perhaps are forecasting? That's obviously the biggest, the biggest bucket, right? And then, all of these other components add into that. So, anyway, I didn't really expect to get a really definitive answer, but I just wanted to at least put that out, but we're going to be looking for it. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to policy monitoring. We've got two items for action. We'll start with 2.5.
I'm going to ask both Gary and Amity to come forward after, yeah, yeah. The first is 2.5, the financial planning and budgeting. And Amity's here to walk you through that. Again, there's a fair amount of redundancy between this one and 2.4, but remember, the focus of this one is to really allow for, you know, am I doing the necessary things that I'm supposed to do regarding financial planning and budgeting on an annual basis? And using the information that comes in from the other monitoring reports in 2.4 to do so. So, it, it feels redundant, probably, to some of those things that you've already heard, but anyway.
Well, and the hardest part about this report is, it's, if we followed the succession of these, of 2.5, last year, 2.5 at this time was reported on the audit at FY '17. So, this year, it has to be reported on the audit at FY '18. So, I reported in 2.4 about our unaudited FY '19. So, now, we're going back a whole year prior to 2.4. So, it is going to be really confusing. I don't know if the timing of this report makes sense right now because I just finished telling you about '19. Now, we're going back to our audited '18, but anyway, I just-
Did we propose this get changed in the calendar?
We, we probably have in the past. And again, we, we actually have had some additional PD with Al Gardner around yearly calendar work, and I'll likely be back. Not, we're not changing this one this year, this set. But on a going-forward basis, there's some dialogue and decisions around, you know, kind of drawing the start point of March, you know, your left column of the yearly calendar, because that's when budgets get passed. So, how everything then unfolds from there forward to help be more informative to the process of both monitoring, budgeting, accountability, et cetera. So, we're, we're trying to put some additional focus on the yearly calendar moving forward, but this one, we have, we didn't, we, we moved it here, thinking probably that it was timely, because we're, we're a little bit late on it, to help inform budgeting based on the data that we use to, to be informed. But as, as Amity says, it's, it's got some dates to it. Doesn't mean, though, that we don't use some of the same protocols and procedures to look at the systems.
Right. I mean, the systems are still similar, no matter how, what budget year we're working through, but it just, it gets a little bit very, I even have a hard time talking about it because I forget now I'm budgeting for '21. We're currently in '20. I just reported on '19, and now I'm going to report on '18. So, bear with me if I make date mistakes.
No, it's a great, it's a great reminder, because I-
Yep.
... did, some of the notes I was scratching to myself, I realized, yeah, that was about FY '19-
Yeah, not '18.
... as I was thinking about those questions. So, yes, we headed off some of those questions. So, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, detail policy one talks about risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial conditions, and activities. Superintendent's interpretation is this is to mean that I will have financial plans in place to minimize risk to the most reasonable extent possible. I will also implement corrective actions described in any state or federal audit, independent financial audit, or the monitoring 2.4 financial condition and activities. So, an example of a financial plan to minimize our risk is our bidding process that we do for lots of goods and services. We send out bids, and there's a list of those that we did in the 2018, 2019 year. And then, some, I think, also were listed in the 2019, 2020, just some we've already done. So, there's examples of that. Also, the creation and maintenance of the, maintenance of this capital reserve fund that was established, and that says the wrong year. It was established in 2016. And that's how we try to keep the minimizing of risk with having that. If there's an emergency, we will have that fund to fall back to. Traditional property, general and auto liability insurance, school leaders' legal liability, catastrophic student accident insurance, cyber liability, pollution liability, and crime insurance are also used to minimize the district's risk from a wide variety of possible situations. And then, our audit indicates financial position, and at the time of the FY '18 audit, we were in a strong financial position, and that summary is listed here.
I have something about that one, I'm sorry, I'm glad you asked you. It's just confusing because the name of the Capital Projects Fund implies that it is similar to the Capital Reserve Fund. Can you just explain the difference one more time?
Sure. So, yes. Capital project funds are the, the bond funds that we have. We have the two current, or one was in 2017, and then we had the 2019. Those are the capital projects. So, anything we've done with a bond is going to be your capital projects. Capital reserve is our $300,000 for our emergency, you know, anything in that stewardship plan. And so, the capital reserve falls under the other government funds. So, yeah, there's a mix of capital reserve and, yes, sorry.
No, no worries. I know there's nothing you can do to change it, but I, I look at it every time and think, wait, what?
Yeah. And I don't think I can change it because that's their, their category in audit, but yeah, it does get a little muddled.
Okay.
So, in 2018 fiscal year, the general fund had, with a total fund balance of $678,826, which was decrease of $387 from the fiscal year '17. And the budget for FY '19 anticipated a reduction in this, in the general fund balance because we had designated $553,435 to use in FY '18 for expenses. And of the FY '18 $678,000 fund balance, the unassigned balance was $65,456, which $555,000 of that $678 was committed to offset in FY '19. And the non-spendable part of the fund balance was $58,000. So, this is also shown in the exhibit 2A from the audit report. Might be a little easier to read it from that than crossing of the years. Just always remembering that our fund balance, when it's in an audit, is going to be used two year, two fiscal years later for expenditures. And the capital projects fund balance at June 30 of '18 was a negative $192,000, down from the prior year of $267,000 in the negative. And that's very common when you're doing projects because you have a lot of things that are still in progress, and so, that's why it's been coming down. And then, there will be more adjustments due to final billing on the '17 bond, because that kind of passed into 2018 and '19 even. And then, the 2000, the bond project for FY '19, actually, a couple of even expenses. We got started in '18 with the approval of the board, but the bond is titled '19. So, it does kind of get a little, it goes from year to year. It's not, it's, it doesn't end like our fiscal year at June 30 with a bond. You tend to have a multi-year project going on. And the other governmental funds are our special revenue, excuse me, special revenue grant funds, as well as that capital reserve fund that we talked about. And that ended with $654,878 positive fund balance. And there was an unassigned fund balance of negative $10,000. And then, all the other parts of that ended our balance at $654,878 of the other governmental funds. Our fund balances for the enterprise funds, the changes showing in this chart here, and then also as an exhibit in, attached to 2B. The pension trust fund is shown below. At June 30 of 2018, the balance was $10.6 million, which was an increase of 1.2 over the prior year, or 13.6%. And that also is shown in the exhibits, but also this little chart will also show you the, the balance at June 30. And the number of the participants has been, was stopped at a max of 353, and that number now stands at 326. Again, this was 2018's numbers. And then, the growth of the assets and the freeze of the new participants entering the plan has brought our required minimum contribution down significantly over the last few years. And so, in '18, it was $539,000 compared to the $616 from '17, which was 12.4% savings there. And then, we are now, on the next page, with the defined contribution plan. We are having higher numbers of participants in that plan. It is still less than the, the reduction, but that will start growing as we have more and more employees that stay and are in the defined contribution plan. So, this chart just kind of shows you for the three years, the number of participants, and then our contributions to both plans, and then the total district contribution to both. The summary of our outstanding debt is, includes bonds, leases, our accrued compensated absences, our net pension liability, and that has decreased by $767,000 to $6.9 million. And the amount of outstanding bonds decreased, $265,000 in '18. That was a principal payment. And the net pension liability decreased by a little over half a million dollars. The $950,500 bond issue was not reflected in the outstanding debt at that time, because that actually, that bond itself didn't get issued until July 1 of 2018, which is the fiscal year '19. And capital assets, the inventory of our capital assets reflecting investments from the bond projects, the stewardship activities, there was a decrease of $223,000 in those assets. We had $1.5 million in federal grant award, which was up a little over $100,000 from FY '17, and the auditors had no finding- 17. And the auditors had no findings when doing the single audit on those federal grants. We did have a management letter for FY 18, and that was shared with the board in March of 2019. And there were three items listed. Purchase orders were issued, they found they were issued after invoices, after the date of an invoice or a product was received, and I mentioned. And there's also copies of our response to that attached, but those happened sometimes at our request. We want the special added expenses put into purchase orders, because there's often multiple lines that need to be expensed for those students, perhaps. And it's easier for that department to identify those for our accounts payable department. So we'll ask them to put in a purchase order after the services have been rendered for a student. So that's the biggest part of it, and we've talked to the auditors about that. They just say it's, you know, kind of goes against what your typical purchasing policy would be.
How do other school districts do that? Do you know? I mean, do they do the same thing?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Because it seems like it would be a very hard thing to predict.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and you know, you're receiving your services, you do have a contract. So at the best of our ability, we do contracts with, you know, Howard and Nye's Network, et cetera. And if we know a contract, we will enter a purchase order at the beginning of the year with that contract, knowing the cost. But then there's other services that a student gets on their IEP that are not necessarily a specific, you know, every month this is going to happen. It might be quarterly. It might be that it started once, and then that didn't work out. And so those are the kinds of things that we ask for a purchase order to be done, because again, it could be multiple students are on an invoice, and so we need it broken down. It just saves time on our side, the business office side versus, and making sure it's done to the right student or the right expense area. So. School lunch deficit has been mentioned years and years, as you know, but we are, you know, still seeing positive movement toward that decline. So that at least shows that we're doing some of the right things. And student activity accounts, the auditors find that there's always, a check is written out of the account where the approval was done after the check was written. So we're trying to tighten that up. We have forms in place. We just have to keep reminding the staff. It's an easy and quick thing for them to write the check, but we also still have to have that approval ahead of time. And also, sales tax, sometimes, you know, they get, charge sales tax, and we try to get them to go back to the store, what have you, with the sales tax exempt certificate. Sometimes we get lucky, sometimes we do not. So again, that audit, or I mean, the management letter and responses attached in the exhibit that was shared with you in April. So we report compliance. Detail Policy 2 is to admit, omit credible protection, projection, excuse me, of revenues and expenses, separation of capital and operational items, cash flow, disclosure of planning assumptions, and predicted financial impact. The interpretation, credible projections to mean that revenue and expense projections are based on both historical trends and plans for the budget year. At the end of the year, the reason for significant differences is used to make improvements and management decisions for the following year. Interpret separation of capital and operational items to mean an ongoing stewardship plan to maintain facilities and a separate documentation of any major capital construction or purchases requiring funding outside the operation, operating budget. I interpret cash flow to mean the projection of cash needed to operate the district on an ongoing basis. I interpret disclosure of planning assumptions to mean that details and reasons about the impact of the budget on the educational program and the variables related to tax and financial actions are shared with the board and community. I interpret predicted financial impact to mean the anticipated residential tax rate of the proposed budget and the listing of the tax rate variables not controlled by the school district, as well as the long-term implications of financial and staffing commitments. For evidence, we have the revenue and expense projections that were reported in the final audit of FY 18, and that we, the Office of Operations and Finance estimates revenues and expense projections primarily during the budget process, but periodically on other occasions throughout the year. The comparison of budget versus actual for general fund revenues for 17 and 18 fiscal year are below, and it shows 2.1% overestimation of revenue, which was then offset by expenses that were 1.84% below budget. And then the use of the 553,000 in the unassigned fund balance from 2016 de-emphasized the 2.1% overestimation of revenue. We use the budget book. The charter bears the subject of budget forecasting, and below is the rule of what needs to be by charter in the budget book. And so expense projections we do based on employment contracts, obligations that we have in place when forecasting is occurring. And the employment contracts are residing on the human resource page. Of course, now they've been replaced since this with new ones, but that's where they are. And we believe that we have complied to this requirement in the 19 budget. The separation of capital and operational items. In March 2018, the voters approved the $950,000 bond for the capital improvements, and it incorporated the improvements for the Muntzen Field Outdoor Restroom Training Room and Storage Building. Also included various improvements at all the district schools for fire alarm upgrades, key scans, roofing, parking lot improvements, asbestos flooring replacement, and door replacements. At the end of June of 2019, 495,000 was expended on these projects, leaving a balance of 455.
So some good news. We always like to interject some little good news here and there. Out of the 375,000 that was allocated for the restroom, training rooms, and the storage building by general contracting and participating and supervising that work ourselves, as a district, we saved just over $50,000 of that bond funding. So, and it was fun.
For cash flow, the level of cash flow necessary for the district to operate relies primarily, as we know, on the timing of property tax payments from the city and the reimbursements from grants, funding, and special education from the state. Typically, tax receipts occur in September, December, April, and the city, oh, sorry. And then depending on the district's overall financial position, there may be a need to borrow for anticipation of those taxes, as we've just recently talked about. In FY 18, we issued a competitive RFP for a tax anticipation note of 3 million, and it was from August through September of 2017. We incurred interest expense, $3,423. And in FY 19, we used a 2.5 million dollar tax anticipation note, and that total interest expense was 2,877. This table shows an eight-year look at interest costs for tax anticipation notes. There were no outstanding loans owed by the district for FY 18, other than our long-term bonds that were budget, approved by our voters, excuse me. And then all those payments for the bonds were made on time. Disclosure of planning assumptions. The presentation of the FY 20 budget to the board, the city council, and community included highlights significant changes and financial implications of the budget. The three bargaining unit contracts were in negotiations during that budget development process, so contingencies were put into place in that budget. And student enrollment projections informed our budget development based on historical budgeting data and from a revenue standpoint, used from the 19, some of the FY 19 budget. This methodology require increased scrutiny, documentation, and a historical analysis during our FY 21 budget development, as we've been discussing from 2.4's report. We've discovered and done some real good work on analyzing those revenues especially. The predicted financial impact during the development of the 20 budget, the board viewed using the budget workshop spreadsheet, the residential and non-residential tax impacts at different levels of spending. And the annual report budget book, as we refer to it, included a narrative of budget highlights, as well as proposed additions and changes in the recommended budget that were added or reduced. And that is also shown as evidence in attachments. So we report compliance. We are in compliance in the areas of the revenue and expense projections. This is again from 18. Separation of capital versus operational items, cash flow, disclosure of planning assumptions, and predicted financial impact. Detail Policy 3 provides less for board prerogatives during the year than is set forth in the governance investment policy. And the superintendent interprets this to mean that the budget contains the level of resources requested by the board for its operations and professional development. So the school board budget includes compensation for the board members, conferences, dues, professional consultation, and miscellaneous operating expenses. These items reflect the board and administration's estimates for operations, and they are discussed and approved annually as part of the budget process. Spending was within the budget constraints, and it amounted to a savings of 16,300 in FY 18. In FY 19, the budget was board-approved at the January 18 meeting at a level of 39,995. And spending came in under budget at a total of 23,000. And the FY 19 school board budget was approved at the January 2019 meeting. I think that's the 2020. I think that's the wrong year.
No.
Is that right? The 19 school board budget was approved at the January 19. Yeah, that wouldn't be correct. It was 18. So, yeah, 2018. And a total of 35,906. Also shown are legal expenses with a budget for FY 20 of 110, up 5,000 from FY 19. So we report policy compliance.
More good news, Gary.
Yes. The board saving us money.
We worked hard at that.
Yes. So the overall policy, the superintendent shall not cause or allow financial planning for any fiscal year or remaining part of any fiscal year to deviate materially from the board's ends policy, risk financial jeopardy, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan. Since the board has not specified priorities for its ends policy, I interpret the policy to mean that academic proficiency is the top priority, and disposition for lifelong learning, personal development, and citizenship equally share second-level priority. I interpret risk financial jeopardy to mean a significant non-compliance with executive limits, 2.4 financial conditions and activities. I interpret derived from a multi-year plan to mean that information used in decision-making for facilities, maintenance, transportation, food service, enrollment, teacher requirements, expenditures, and revenues are aligned with the 2020 plan, and our multi-tiered system of support includes projections and estimates of the expected state of affairs at least three years into the future.
Let me just pause there for a second on the interpretation. One desired change here would not to be prioritized at all, the ends, and just call them all ends and not prioritize one over the other. So that, I would like to make that change. So in the past, we've had academic proficiency, but the ends are the ends, and I'd rather not make that, I would retract that statement on my interpretation. Going forward on the evidence, disposition for lifelong learning, you'll see that there's, this has been updated based on the work that Mike Martin has been doing with the staff in the district on both, all of the areas. Disposition for lifelong learning, academic proficiency, personal development, and citizenship. I'm happy to read those to you, but I would encourage maybe if you would like more clarity on any one of those, that you can certainly come back to us. But a lot of these, I think you've heard, and you'll continue to hear about. So that kind of carries you through the four areas, ending with citizenship. So then you've got risk, financial jeopardy.
So during this period of this report, there were no violations of Executive Policy 2.4. In FY 18 audit, had no significant findings of internal controls that were to be addressed. The management letter and responses have been put into place, and the nutritional services deficit is shown improvement historically. Reports going forward used in budget preparation analysis will include a projection of year-end position and will be included in the budget process. The projection used for the FY 20 budget is shown in Exhibit 5. And Exhibit 5 includes a summary listing of the current year's adopted budget, the actual expenditures to date to the year-end position. As a result, the reports showed general fund expenditures showing a possible savings in 2019 over budget by 693. We know that did not happen, but at this time, it was how it was reported. Exhibit 5 also shows the approved budget by the voters in March for FY 20. Multi-year planning, the district's facility stewardship continues to serve as the basis for the facility costs. That's also attached in an exhibit. It's been very valuable in making decisions about priorities while keeping a steadier annual budget line for maintaining operation resources. In addition, the board and administration continued the master planning envisioning process and included an evaluation of the high school, middle school buildings in relation to how well they support the 21st century educational delivery. We report compliance.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I can't have any. Thanks.
It's about this particular financial year. I did have that question about the ends, because I thought we had talked about that last year.
Yep. We did. I should have reordered that. We did work on each one of the areas, so that if you choose to move forward, I would like that to just be reworded.
Yeah, the only observation I'd make is this does seem to be coming out of order. And even to evaluate our monitoring summary on this, it's hard not to look at current situation.
Yeah.
100% agree. It's a very difficult year to write this report, because I had just finished 2.4. So for me, it was very hard not to want to meld the two and not create more blurry lines.
You see, when we talked about this, when we think about financial planning and budgeting, we put it in the context of the year in which, again, this was expected to be earlier, right, in October, to help inform budgeting. And so it's not wrong that it does that, but it's, the data that is in there is not in the same kind of informative pattern, you know? So again, I think to your point, this is again a relook at where we place these on our yearly calendar. This could likely be one that's farther towards the end, right, of?
Well, and I mean, to be fair, the audit had been coming kind of into the February-March timeframe. I've really pushed on them to get us the FY 19 in December, and they've promised to come through for us, because we have some significant needs this year, mostly because of the bond. But I mean, it is nice to have our audited financials early enough into the budget year to know what we're really looking for. So we've been promised that, but in years past, woo, March, I think that would have helped me a while ago. I couldn't read my words. You know, in past, it's been almost March when we're getting that audit. So you can't even report on this audited until at least March, or, you know, typically. So it is definitely something we need to look at calendar-wise.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this serves to me to exacerbate why we talk about modified policy governance, because there doesn't seem anything actionable with this.
No.
It's truly a historical assessment, and pretty dated at that.
It's very dated.
Yeah. I don't, to that end, I think we really do need to look at where this goes in the calendar, because this, this to me should be as, I don't want to say as actionable, but linked to real time as possible.
We totally agree. The only, the only other comment I have, and I hate to do it on camera, but if you could be a fly on the wall for some of the dialogue and the confusion when we're preparing this report in our office, it would be wildly entertaining for you.
Well, I'm sorry to hear about that.
What FY, are we talking now?
So are we prepared to go through and fill out the monitoring report? All right. We'll start with the detail policies. Number one, risk incurring those, well, the superintendent shall not risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial conditions and activities. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Two, omit credible projection of revenues and expenses, separation of capital and operational items, cash flow, disclosure
items, cash flow, disclosure of planning assumptions, and predicted financial impact. Or reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance.
Yes.
And thirdly, provide less for board, shall not provide less for board prerogatives during the year than is set forth in a governance investment policy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance.
Yes.
And on the overall, the superintendent shall not cause or allow financial planning for any fiscal year or the remaining part of any fiscal year to deviate materially from the board's ends priorities, risk financial jeopardy, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan. And with the change in your interpretation, reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance.
Yes.
All right. All right, thanks. We'll move on to two-point-oh global executive constraint.
So, I don't know how you want to do this one. We can go through it. Probably don't need to read this one to you, but we can highlight some of the specifics in the highlighted yellow, maybe? If that works.
Is yellow what has been changed?
Correct.
And what's the blue?
The blue is added as well, because we've added, also, it's a hyperlink essentially, where you could go to get some of the information on that.
Yeah, would you mind just going through the modifications?
So, on page two of six, this is, again, related to disseminating how we respond to required laws. And so, what's added in here, again, I'm on top of page two, we disseminate state and federal legal postings, and one of the things that we've done, which you've known in the past, is that we do post up and upload Safe Schools to our district employees in the onboarding process. So, that's, again, newer than what we've done in the past. Number two, a schedule for regular meetings with administrators and central office and those that report to me or the position. So, again, that's an add. For the management team, again, developing procedures that are required by law or considered best practice, again, then have highlighted some of those procedures, which include exposure control plans, grant process, employee retention records that we have, again, these are attachments that are there, post offer physical exams that we provide now, and then we've begun work on a training program for transportation drivers as required by a new required law under FMCSA. Don't ask me to name what that one means, but by two thousand twenty. Continuing on down in the evidence piece, just that we utilize an online format for processing unemployment claims.
There's a quick suggestion on this. On number three, if you just, you might want to just change your language to central office team and direct reports?
Yeah, instead of those report. Mm-hmm. Yep.
And is there, is there a benchmark on number four, considered best practices, that by an agency, or is it, is there a common reference point there?
Yeah, so, this is, probably could be SHRM, which is the Senior Human Resource Professional Practice Examples. So, we could probably add that in as well. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Amity.
Thanks.
Moving on to page three. Again, this is related to our emergency preparedness, our crisis response team, so just the district has a section, we've taken that out, and maintains a crisis training plan and assigns training in crisis team members via Safe Schools. Happy to talk about that more if you have questions. And then, page four talks about where violations have occurred. And so, we've had three harassment complaints. The complaints were investigated and not found to fit the definition of harassment, but nonetheless, we had a complaint. They were resolved through communication and/or performance plan. Unlawful situations, again, reported DUI conviction. This occurred off property and not during work time, and driving is not required for this particular job. We have one pending case currently of an illegal substance. And then, unsafe situations, the workers' comp report attachment six provides that information. Professional ethics violations, we have one complaint filed, and the investigative that was done was not credible. Pause if you need me to respond more to those. Under seventeen, bottom of page four, this is related to our current board negotiated benefits, and some changes in here to the third-party administrator CS one to add that. Seventeen continues on to the next page, and this just, again, highlighting the third-party administrator CS one resolving the issues and improving the payment process for customers in our district. Bottom of page five, again, just the date change of November fifteenth nineteen, and then number of meetings that have happened currently, drop and appointments, and this is the onboarding work, or the appointments related to enrollments, has gone from fifteen to thirty.
At this, the meetings reference these accounts as well as other benefit plans?
Yeah, so, it's really our open enrollment period is what we're talking about, so that may be more clear to say open enrollments, but there's a variety of things that go on in that discussion period, so.
I just, I don't think that's, it's not applicable any longer, because it was referencing health savings accounts.
Yeah, so, we're good on the first part, open enrollment. November fifteenth, it opened. I'm not seeing where you're seeing.
It's on page six.
Mm-hmm.
Scheduled thirty meetings, conducted a number drop, and to find out, maybe it's more about these benefits.
Yes.
Or more about benefits.
Instead of accounts, is that what you were?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you now.
Maybe it's just more about benefit.
Benefits.
Benefits or plans.
No, I see what you're saying. That's definitely clear.
All right. Under global executive constraint two-point-oh, the superintendent shall not allow any practice, activity, decision, or organizational circumstance that is unlawful, unsafe, imprudent, or in violation of commonly accepted educational and professional ethics and practices. The superintendent shall not fail to provide a continuous improvement process, including a complaint process. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
We'll move on to agenda item eleven, appoint a delegate to vote on the Act eleven ratification agreement. I'm sorry that Amity and Gary didn't stay for this. I'm happy to meet with them, David, if so desired, to kind of go over what LBOs are. Just a brief, a brief update that I serve as the chair of the employer's side of the commission for Act eleven and co-chair of the commission, and we've been negotiating since April on a statewide healthcare benefit for all educational employees, inclusive of licensed teachers and administrators and non-licensed support staff. We've gone through a pretty rigorous process that I won't detail, but last best offers were submitted this Monday to an arbitrator with the intent that the arbitrator will issue a binding decision by the fifteenth of December. And there were a few items that were in disagreement, that the parties were in disagreement with at the time that we submitted, we had arbitration hearings and submitted the last best offers. The arbitrator's obligated to choose one or the other offer in its entirety or proposal. So, that's what we expect to see on the fifteenth, barring any kind of a mediation that might be called between now and then. But very briefly, the items that are in discussion or continued discussion would be the eligibility, so the minimum threshold of the number of hours an employee would work for a district or supervisory union to qualify for access to healthcare benefits. The other area would be the definition of full-time, so where, at what number of hours an employee would access the hundred percent of the benefit versus a prorated benefit. A third area is the premium share for support staff, and the last area deals with out-of-pocket costs, both the absolute dollar amount associated with the last dollar that the employee would pay toward out-of-pocket, as well as the out-of-pocket funding mechanism, whether it would be an HRA or an HSA. So, those are the main items that the arbitrator will have to make a decision on, and we'll hear more. I think detailed information is publicly available now, so, again, if anybody from the business office wants access to that for budgeting purposes, that's perfectly appropriate.
And the decision will likely be of around when?
It has to be by December fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah. I don't know that there's anything preventing that decision from coming earlier, but the law states the fifteenth.
Great. Thanks, Alyssa.
So, as far as a delegate goes, if it goes to the arbitrator and a decision's made, there's no need for a ratification process, but if a decision were made between the parties right now, the union has to come up with a ratification process, and employers have to come up with one. And what the Vermont School Boards Association is proposing is some kind of an online webinar system, where there'd be an education on what the terms are, and then a voting process online. So, if it comes to that, we should appoint a delegate to vote on South Burlington's behalf, that I would prefer not be me, since I sit in the commission. Should we have a motion to nominate for someone, have someone on the board to be that delegate? Or a volunteer?
I'll self-nominate.
I will second that self-nomination.
All right. All in favor of appointing Brian as our delegate to vote on Act eleven if needed?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Negotiations update. Do you want to give that?
There's not a lot of updates since last time, so last meeting, we ratified the contract with the South Burlington Administrators Association, and we are basically sort of waiting with bated breath to see the outcome of Act eleven, I think, to really get going, but there's some early discussions about getting going on the next cycle of negotiations with all three associations. That's really all I have.
Great. All right, other paper articles. We don't have an attachment with this one.
We did, actually. There was in the packet.
I missed it.
So.
We had discussed something else last time, hadn't we, Alex? I can't remember what we landed on.
We did. I think we weren't quite sure what we were going to do for a funding mechanism for the bond, so with the, we wouldn't want to write an article about something that would eventually become completely irrelevant, obsolete, whatever you want to call it. So, I'm happy to put together something on perhaps a subject that is a little less
Not coming to me at the moment. I'm thinking about things that people, there may be some academic information that we may want to put out.
Okay.
As an opportunity for some reflection on kind of how are we doing?
Are you talking about like S-BEX course?
Yeah.
A reflection on that? When are we actually going to see?
But you guys need to get that first before we do that. We have a plan in place, and I've talked to Mike. We're going to come back to you here. You don't know, do you, Delina? Did I discuss any of that with you? Probably not. Yep.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question. We talked about our next meeting.
I don't think that fits in here, so you need to be informed before we then do the, do a push-out to the community. We have it set.
I feel like we'd be missing an opportunity not to do something on master planning and visioning for publication in December.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's probably right, Bridgette, to put a hold, do you know what I mean?
Well, we could do another process article that just sort of says where we are in the process and what people can expect after the new year. I think that probably makes sense.
So, that would be for the twelve-five issue?
Yep. Will we have any additional information on the communication plan?
Yes.
That would be particularly helpful, I think, to be able to articulate elements of that.
We'll be able to provide more information about what are planned communication events. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have, we have yet work to do. We're going to continue to populate as we move forward, but part of that work with the next working group meeting will be to evaluate, you know, to be, to do that, and I don't know, that's the fifth.
We'll probably, we'll probably.
I think we're pushing it.
Are we absolutely sure that the twenty-seventh is the deadline with the holiday and everything in there? I just want to make sure that we're not, that is a Wednesday, so maybe that is, have we double-checked?
I haven't.
That, I'm not looking at you, I was looking at Delina really. Do we know for sure that's the deadline for the?
I received these from the other papers.
Okay, so, it does. Okay.
Unless they've changed it and not notified us.
Yeah, the date and when it will run, right? The due date and when it will run. We have in the past had a little leeway, but I think we're pushing it to do for getting something on by eleven-twenty-seven, but maybe we, maybe.
I could do that. I mean, I, no, I could do that.
Just an update on the process.
Yeah, no, I could do an update on the process. And I would just need to reach out to Nicole before I put anything in a newspaper that says, you know, we will have website up by, you know, such-and-such time, those kinds of things. And then, we would need to, some of it would be somewhat broad. We would have to say, you know, like, our community meeting would be within the first probably couple weeks of January, you know, we would have to sort of have a range of dates, because I don't think we can nail that down in the next couple of days, which is what we would really need to do in order to get.
So, I met with them today while you guys were doing the finance meeting, and, you know, we've repopulated and plugged some things in there, so I think it's probably right to have a direct communication with you and Nicole or Jess, and be able to then take the updated Google Doc that we have going on in the communication piece to see how far we can go with that. I mean, there's some, we get down too far, we don't have clarity on what we're doing, but some of those earlier dates, we have commitments for, up to including like the, you know, the SBBA, the Rotary, I think you were close to, right?
Rotary is scheduled now for January sixteenth. Yeah, yeah.
But we probably, we talked about getting a community meeting set. I don't know if that's in there or not, but, so that we did a fair amount of work, and they had some to-dos on that.
Okay.
Out of today's meeting. I'm happy to help with that.
Yeah. Alex, I think it's better for me to write this one, if it's really going to be about communication process and all that, as somebody who's on the working.
Can we switch you, Alex, to the budget one?
Excuse me?
Can we switch you to the budget one?
Sure.
Okay. And any ideas just to get them in the queue for an article that would run two days after town meeting?
Hmm. That might be a good one. Will the S-BEX be out by then?
Well, the S-BEX are out. The analysis of it is what's happening. Yeah, so, I think that would be a good S-BEX one.
You can. You can, you can, I can, I should know, I can't remember what we set for the date, but put Mike Martin and me, and therefore, S-BEX and student.
All right. Setting the agenda for December 4th.
So you can take off 2-5 and 2-0. I think that we don't add a whole lot more in here, I think we should reserve some budget time in here. And we've got, we're going to have, we'll have, you know, we'll continue to have the discussion. What do you think on the master planning, Bridget?
We'll still do an update, but we don't.
I don't think it's going to be a big night for a big presentation or anything.
So 30 minutes is probably right for that.
It's fine.
Yeah. And it seems kind of light here, but.
Yeah, that was my question, is whether Mike was going to have anything on S-BEX and all of that by then, or is that too early? Because I do have a senior, it was around this time of year last year that we had a presentation from him and Pat.
Yeah, so let me check on this kind of the student assessment, and we'll plug budget in here. We already have some of that with the tax commissioners recommended state rates, but probably after nine, we would just put, again, it may be early still, right? Just to give you some updates on where we are.
Given, given some of the noise level we've heard in the press on proficiency-based graduation requirements and then grading, is that a topic we want to give an update on?
PBGRs and PLPs and grades kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know what the hot buttons are, and there's some feedback that Maine has moved away from that decision, and I don't know all the details.
Actually factored in if Mike does a little update.
In fact, I think that's how we did it last year. I think Pat gave a big update on proficiency-based graduation requirements, and Mike at the same time talked a little bit high level about aspects.
Let me see, let me, let me see where we are with, because I do have him coming. We're going to start to do some different things also, you'll start to hear, we're going to, and I got, I'll talk more with you, Elizabeth, about it, but some ends in action updates, so we'll get some, maybe 15 minutes before a lot of our, in our beginning of our meeting, so you'll see some things, whether it's citizenry or some academic pieces, there'll be some student representation of ends in action, is what I think Mike and I have come up with.
I like that.
Yeah. So, so I'll check with Mike on availability, and, because we may be off by a meeting, we did, we did talk about it, but I can also see if we can push it up.
Okay.
And Patrick maybe as well.
All right, and it would be nice to have a lighter meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Anything on future agenda items?
We had added some last time, Elizabeth, when you weren't here, sort of along the lines of proficiency-based grading, there were things that were bubbling up, like things we've been getting questions about in the community. So those last four bullets really were added. The math curriculum, there's been a lot of questions about, at all levels, the elementary level with bridges and how that's working out and, and or not, and, you know, some more discussion about that, and then the integration of the different subjects and the sort of how people are placed into math at the high school level. I know that community members have met with Mike Martin, and there have been some questions about that, so that would be good for the board to sort of hear what's going on with those. And then, you, Brian, or was it Martin that brought up early college participation and trends, and how that's impacting what we're doing in the buildings? And then, bus drivers and staffing has been a real hot button issue, and particularly, that gets to be an even bigger issue as we talk about potentially, if the bond passes and we're talking about busing, a lot of student athletes off of campus for more away games and more practices and things off-campus for those years. We really have to sort of have a plan in place, and that's been a real challenge this year, and continues to be a challenge with staffing and people showing up for work and that kind of thing. And then, technology in the classroom has also come up in terms of, you know, I know Mike was working, I thought, on some kind of report about how is the district doing in that regard, in terms of how technology is used in the classroom, and how it's different at different levels and that kind of thing. So those were the four that kind of got added. That's just a brief rundown.
Yeah, you almost doubled that list in one meeting.
We snuck those in when you weren't here, because you always try to keep them off, but, but those were just things that have sort of been coming up, and, you know, as we've done with others, if they are going to fall under a good monitoring report that comes up, that makes sense to, you know, map them to one of those monitoring reports, but if not, there are things that, you know, multiple people have asked questions about that probably we should just know about as a board.
Okay, good. All right, maybe.
We can, we can talk about where they update those, maybe when Mike's here.
Okay. All right, item 16, consider the minutes of November 6th. Any changes on that?
I thought they were fine.
All right, seeing none, those are approved. Any questions on AP orders 19 and 20?
No.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. I may have some signatures, I've got two big folders here.
Thank you, Delina.